Good evening, everyone. Oops, no. This, this mic's not working. Oh, oh yeah? Okay. Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. Welcome to the April Hoboken Board of Education Meeting. Tonight, we are starting with a training session on ethics for our school board members, and the training will be presented by our board attorney, Mr. Vito Gagliardi. Ms. Good, can you please read the Statement of Compliance? Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we take the roll call, please, Ms. Good?
Here.
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 Mr. Colwell.
Here.
Mr. Kirk.
Here.
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 Here. Okay, so first, like I mentioned, we're going to start with training. And in order to make it more conversational, we'll go down into the seats, and Mr. Gagliardi will present to us in the audience.
So, greetings, everyone. This is shortly here. It's like myself addressing the board, but my, over a decade of reporting, always has never ceased to be interesting, so I will add this to my list of interesting experiences. I apologize for having missed the last three meetings. Some of my experiences were interesting. I was on trial. I was in our office in San Juan. But I'm happy to be back home here with you folks. I ask Antonio and Leslie to accept my belated congratulations for your joining the board. It's required by law that on an annual basis, you receive training in the area of school ethics. So for those of you who've sent through this once or twice, I apologize for treading on old ground. The first thing that I do, that I always do, is go over the law. I'll just highlight a few things, and I'll go over them line by line. I'll give some practical suggestions, and then we'll go through some case studies where you can learn from the misery of others. So, the School Ethics Act itself, and these are the first few pages of the annual activity, the School Ethics Act itself was adopted into Walden more than 20 years ago. And I generally don't spend a lot of time on this portion of the law, because this portion of the law is the portion that most people are familiar with, and few people aren't. This is the portion of the law that talks about you're not having a contract or financial interest for making what goes on in the Board of Education. You're not trying to get yourself, or someone in your family, or friends, a job as a result of your service in the Board of Education. These are the very obvious conflicts of interest that generally most board members don't run afoul. And when I go over the other parts of the act, and when I go over the case studies, you'll realize that most people run afoul of that because they are trying to help. And how they help is what often gets in trouble. And hopefully, I will use our experiences to help you get out of trouble. The one nuance that I want to highlight in the first section of the Original School of Ethics Act is when they talk about financial problems, when they talk about even wanting more service again, things that you may not be doing for money, but that you're doing for the best of the current member or friends, anything that might prejudice your independence of judgment, your objectivity, those are the words in the law. These are things that you need to avoid. It's one of the many areas in which service on a school board is different than any other type of public service. You think about public service, just about any capacity, where you are a member of a political party, where you go to places specifically and identify yourself as a councilman, or a county commissioner, and make certain representations. Those are common to public figures in pretty much all capacities of life in New Jersey and around the country. But for school board members, it's very different. So, as you might imagine, being a part of a political party is not only identifiable in the way that people depend on your judgment as being had, but it's something that most political figures seek is to say they look to be members of political parties. In your case, anything that might impair your independence of judgment is forbidden by the Original School Ethics Act. Again, not always overt financial obligations, but relationships with businesses or employees are the sort of things that you need to avoid. And if you have not been able to avoid them, then you should not participate in discussions or votes on areas where someone might reasonably question, quote-unquote, your independence of judgment. The next section identifies, again, when your judgment is impaired when it comes to voting on particular actions related to personnel. Now, these are the areas that I want to highlight, because for those of you who've been involved with the board for quite some time, these are areas that have changed as cases have evolved. So, actually, what I've been meaning to say for a long time is... So, you recognize that for those of you who have family members supporting the district, you can't participate in evaluation or review of anyone who serves in supervisory capacity over your eminence. So, if you're a teacher, and you get involved with Vice Principal of that building, the Principal of that building, the Superintendent, the Superintendent, you have to refuse yourself from anything by law or evaluation of certain contract. It's different when the conflict comes not because you're employed, but because of membership in a bargaining room. So, if you are a member of a immediate family, or a member of a local bargaining room, now, maybe you can't be employed by this business. You could be employed by any contract outside. If someone in your family is employed, you cannot participate in any negotiation, discussion, or vote involving that collective bargaining room. If on the other hand, you are a teacher, by definition, or administrator elsewhere, this is very challenging and somewhat common too. You could not participate in negotiations, but once there is a memorandum of agreement, you can participate in discussion and in the vote, as if there were no such incumbents on the board. And that's one of the things that has evolved over the years. So, if you are a member of a immediate family, who are in a sister bargaining room, not working at Home Depot, but working as a teacher or administrator elsewhere, not participating in negotiations either, once there is a memorandum of agreement, you can participate in discussion and vote on it. Why is it that way? I honestly don't know. But I know that originally, the issue was concern that when there is negotiations, and given they look at what's going on in other districts, that somehow you might be able to benefit yourself by participating in the negotiation of what the raise might be. So, what they did was they reserved that. But the thinking was, once the memorandum of agreement is in place, the range of wages, the range of increases is already set. And so, the opportunity for you to vary that simply by voting yes or no on what the member who has been, has dissipated, so that it would allow you to vote under those circumstances. The School Ethics Act portion that provides the most difficulty for members is in the next section that you have in front of you, which is the Code of Ethics. So, a little more than a decade ago, classic Jersey legislation, right? So, there's a discussion in Trenton about the fact that folks were filing ethics complaints against board members to try to drive them from the board, or at least hurt them financially, since board members, they want a counsel, have to pay for themselves. If you have a position by law, you can't be compensated for, and you might have to get lawyers, someone filed an ethical complaint. So, I know the idea of filing meritless ethics complaints against board members to torture them, perhaps drive them from the board, is never something that would happen in a public, but it was a concern elsewhere. And so, there was a trade-off. They added the portion of the statute that said, "You're entitled to counsel at the board's expense if you are named in an ethics case and want counsel." But then they expanded the School Ethics Act to add this Code of Ethics, which before that law was passed in 2001, were aspirational suggestions from the School Boards Association that they clumped into the law, which is why this reads so oddly. So, what you have in front of you is exactly as the statute reads. And you've never seen a statute that begins with,[752.84][752.96]"I will uphold and enforce all laws. I will make decisions. I will confine my board action." Why is it written like that? Because it was something that the School Boards Association suggested to board members, and wound up in this odd compromise, simply being drafted to the Original School Ethics Act. And it's these aspirational suggestions, now law, that often pose problems for board members. So, you'll see in Section C, "I will confine my board action" policy, planning, appraisal, confining them, getting involved in anything that the chief executive does, again, much more restrictive than you would see, for example, if you were to counsel. They specifically tell you indeed, your responsibility is not to administer to schools, but to work with your board members, see if they are well-run by the set policy. You are to recognize authority vested in the board, and make no personal promises, nor take any private action if they compromise the board. The personal promises section was used to bring ethics charges against board members who made certain assurances when they were running. "I'm going to get rid of that X, go on the name of the board, the final letter." And then, seek to do it, once they get on the board. Well, you're not basing that on a recommendation from the chief school administrator. You're basing it on some sort of eventual promise when you were running. And that has been the basis for successful ethics complaints against board members. Assuming the way you plan campaign is different than it is in just about any other circumstance you can have. You can see Section G, which is the section providing for confidentiality. There is a comment that was stated among board members that you can't share what you learn in executive session, period. But when you see the law, it's much broader than that. It's matters pertaining to the schools which have disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools, needlessly injured. Again, much broader than what you learn in executive session. Much broader than someone keeping personnel or student information confidential. Very restricted. And so, were you active on social media, or were you involved in campaigning? Absolutely have a link of potential implications of saying what you're going to say as it relates to school operations, because it may run afoul of this provision of the School Ethics Act. In fact, it's not just a matter of criticizing school personnel. You are required to, quote, "support and protect school personnel." Support and protect, again, not the sort of language you typically see in the law. It's very vague, but it is part of the law. And so, critical comments may about staff and consciousness here, but in a casual social setting, can lead to a happy debate that faces ethics complaints. If you have a concern about the performance of school personnel, you have but one amendment, as required by Final Amendment, code J, referring to all complaints to chief school administrator. So, let's talk about your communications as it relates to your role as a board member. So, as you know, the Open Public Meetings Act requires me, except in the circumstances where you meet in executive session, to have any discussions and take any actions as it relates to board action, as part of an advertised meeting of the public. So, the public has an opportunity to witness what you do. Even that is viewed very restricted, in a very, very strict way. So, for example, some boards have tried to conduct the elections of officers by private ballot, where you submit in writing to the board secretary, who's, you know, in the end, like we do on Survivor. The commissioner and the courts have made very clear, public has the right to see who's voting in what way, right? So, it is a very strict reading about what is troubling, and what comes to some meeting. And that allows me to visit something that I covered in pretty much every one of these that I do, which are the implications of text or email groups where there is a quorum of the board. So, let's remove this from the world of technology, and look at things way, way back, Europe, like when my career began, okay? Wouldn't it have been a violation of the School Ethics Act for the chief school administrator to simply put in the board packet and notice about a matter of concern to every board member? Of course not. But it's going at every board member, isn't that a quorum? Yes, but you're not gathering together. So, that's not the problem. And so, when you add technology to it, the email to all of you updating you on something is not a problem. It's the reply all button. That is, when you use, and that said, if it's involving board business, not something private where, you know, someone's child is getting married, or someone's in the hospital, board business, if it involves board business, and there's a reply all, and there's more than a quorum on that reply all, you are absolutely technically violating the School Ethics Act. If it's a thanks, or a thumbs up, the law doesn't much care about that. The first line of punishment for violating the School Ethics Act is a do-over. You have to have a properly advertised, and you do publicly what you do, reply all. No judge is going to make you do that for a thumbs up. But if you respond subtly, thank you, pristine, you know, "I'm greatly concerned, blah, blah, blah," and then you hit reply all, absolutely certain to be violating the School Ethics Act. And I also remind you about that. Unless it's a legal issue, or a matter of personnel, keep in mind that that response that you send may be subject to a request from the Open Public Records Act. So, even if you're not violating the School, the Open Public Meetings Act, you may be creating a public record that is reviewed by some member of the public on request. So, the use of written communications is a time to be cautious, all because of the Open Public Meetings Act and the Open Public Records Act. It's typical, by the way, and I don't know if you hear it here, if you were to read that, and I feel the direction is mostly in, like, superintendent, this administrator, or president, to remind people of, "At all, again, do not reply all." I noticed somebody is going down. All right, so, let's take a look at the areas where you often tread on the School Ethics Act, and where your First Amendment rights will conflict with those restrictive operations that you have as a board member. So, we're looking at a case from less than two years ago, out of town. A board member writes an author and endorsing four candidates and advocating against a particular candidate. The board member asserts a disclaimer. The author is writing, endorsing for his own personal benefit. He thinks it's on his own. Question. That board member violated the School Ethics Act. Anybody for yes? Anybody for no? Person is not following the School Ethics Act. The language is not right. Correct. And this, I can think of four different iterations of this language. You are obligated to say, "I'm a board member." You are prohibited from saying, "I'm a board member." It is changed repeatedly. The current version of the language I give you is probably been good for about three or four years. Thinking is that this language is designed for a man accusing. The person may or may not know that you're a board member, so you want to make it clear. So, we have given you an example of the appropriate disclaimer. So, if you are compelled to speak on a matter of public concern, involving election, or a candidate, otherwise involved with the board, the language is there where we say, "Example of appropriate disclaimer." To the next case, this language has been acceptable, as I said, for about three or four years. The current intention is to say, "You are speaking as a private citizen, but you are not speaking in capacity as a board member." In the days when there used to be letters to the editor, printed newspapers that you could feel and smell, a lot of times, the editor would add, "The bottom, you know, member of the XYZ Board of Education." You didn't put it in there. But there it is. And then you will be held responsible for it, the School Ethics Act. So, it's okay, in fact, required to make it clear you're not speaking as a board member, and that you are conveying only your own personal feelings. So, we've given you that, but identify yourself as a board member, make it clear. It's not for company after board. You want to provide accurate information, but not confidential information. And lastly, that disclaimer does not help you if you say something that compromises the board, right? So, if you say, "Principal Jones," I don't forget what Principal Jones, you're right. "Principal Jones is an absolute disaster, an embarrassment to public education." This is my own personal opinion, not that, I'm not speaking behalf of the board ever. That disclaimer doesn't help you. So, keep that in mind, again, in terms of your obligation to be supportive, right? Not just, don't criticize it too much, be supportive of school personnel. Do you think Principal XYZ states you should be talking to the superintendent about it? You should be asking the board president to have a substantive discussion of government's personnel committee? The idea of a social media post about it, having a debate, just don't do it. Would you better before you're on the board? Of course. But you can't do it. All right, speaking of social media posts, my goodness, a sizable percentage of the School Ethics Act cases are about social media posts. There's very few cases about, "I went to the business administrator's office and threatened here with weapons, and you got to give my cousin a job." Those are not the cases. The cases involve social media, right? So, a board member shares an article on a personal Facebook post regarding new legislation, and then has the, he goes with the boo and the thumbs down. No disclaimer, right? Is there been a violation of the School Ethics Act there? Anybody? Any? Right, why not? Correct, this is it. Yeah, well, you're absolutely right. I think you could have gone further and said, you know, "Trent should be embarrassed, this is terrible," whatever, "You should not comment on a matter before the board." So, you can beat up the Department of Education all you want, somewhat encouraging. But if you were to speak about not something that's pending before the Department of Education or the legislature, or pending before the board, the result would be yas. Okay. A board member posts the following on their Facebook page, who has the proper disclaimer, or disclaimer at the proper time, saying that "District would be better off if the business administrator wasn't so cheap, and didn't get so much enjoyment out of cutting costs." But we like chief business administrators, so that's, that's okay. I mean, I think that's an endorsement, right? So, what do we think? Is that, is that right or wrong? Absolute violation. Right. Did we give you the answers? All right. Well, great, I'm a fair friend. I don't want to say about the people who get it wrong. Right, so remember that language, again. Very different than the language you see in typical legislation. Support and protect school personnel, right? So, clearly, while you are entitled to your opinion, if you're a private citizen, if you were really sitting out there for the whole meeting, that would be fine. As a board member, you absolutely cannot convey that. Okay. So, a board member receives a private message from a middle school parent that the child has been bullied at school, and asks for the board member's help. A board member sends a message to several parents in the middle school to see whether there's any truth in the allegations. Again, like so many cases, right, the board member is trying to help. It's difficult when you're cornered in the supermarket, or on the soccer field, or on the school, when someone you know is saying, "My child's having this problem at school. I put you on the board, can you help?" And if you want to say yes, the answer is, "Yes, comma, I'll bring this to the attention of the superintendent." You can get involved with discussions about what did you talk to the principal about this year, the chain of command, whatever, but once you give advice, I think in that place, you don't want to do it. That's reasonable. Yeah, I mean, I'm always reluctant, because I've seen these situations where board members trying to be helpful are misquoted, right? Board member X told me, so the parent goes to the principal, "What do we're X told you need to help? You need to do something about this." You didn't say that you need to do something, this is the issue. Talk to the principal. So, it's very circumstantial, but I would just caution you. What you described is not wrong, but there is a chance you're going to be misquoted. I'll leave that to your judgment as to whether you're talking to someone that you are concerned with being misquoted, right? Where they go to the principal, and says, "A board member I talked to said, you've got to help, you've got to do something about this. You've got to help us, you've got to take action." That's, that's my recognition. What you described is wrong, but it will get you into difficulty.
(Inaudible) It's like, it feels to me like I'm, right, as a board member, like, okay, I'll pass to him, or I'm just, it's like, I'm carrying water on him, or it feels like, it's important to go back to the chief, and then talk to the principal, and the principal is still the principal, and if you're not asked, like, to go off to the superintendent, and then, and adding, and, and, and and that feels like, you're, going through the channels of advocacy as opposed to a board member during the message.
Correct. Yes. So, that's the concern. My concern isn't precisely what you're going to say. My concern is what someone might think you said, or be inclined to represent that you said. And we had a situation, this is the last one, so it hasn't shown up in the case yet. It's actually a civil student, a teacher from the same, from the town, right, with orders, who was terminated because of a technical defect in their credentials, and whether they had talked to a problem about that. They said, the teacher filed, who was a whistleblower, was saying, "It's because I conveyed the following in writing about my principal, and the superintendent didn't like that, and that's why I'm terminated." We did not notice, but the teacher, in the course of their frustration with their principal, had had some discussions with some of our board members. And in one case, we found this out during the deposition, where it turns out that the board member had the teacher into their home, and encouraged the teacher to put their concerns about the principal in writing. And another board member, present for this discussion, admitted under oath that she said to the teacher, "Don't worry about it. You'll be protected, I'm a whistleblower." So, you could imagine our delight. They realized that they were in hot water. They were embarrassed. They did not tell the superintendent about that. They did not tell us about it. And so, we heard about the... And so we heard about the, that you say, "Don't worry, you'll be protected as a whistleblower." Board member she, which they answered, "Yes." We learned this at the deposition, not during one of the prep sessions, not in a year and a half leading up to it, but there. I don't believe the board members involved were being malicious, they were trying to help. Now, you could only imagine what it does to the value of a whistleblower case if a board member said, "Go ahead and do this, you'll be protected as a whistleblower," and the person winds up, "Fine." So the shorter, the more succinct, and honestly, the less helpful your conversations are, the better off you are. It's difficult, because these are people who come to you that you know, right? These are neighbors, these are friends, and maybe people whose children play with your children, what the rest? But that conversation, again, I say respectfully, should be very short. "I'm not permitted to get involved in this." You should talk to your principal. "I'm not permitted to get involved in this, I'll talk to the superintendent." That, sure. I know you can't wave your hand and walk away from a person. Well, that would be the best of my standing, but as close to that as you can possibly get. And if any of you ever says to a member of the teaching staff here, "Don't worry, you'll be protected as a whistleblower," how many of you know what you said that, sometime before your deposition?
You know, so, I have a list of things, I think you should have thought of, like, the procedure is, you should not, but this does, my, my, so, 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 so.
I don't know that anyone will remember the words as precisely as you articulated them, but I agree with you, your words are better.
Your words, I think, are, is, is.
I'm happy to tell you, none of the examples I've ever used, and I've been doing these administrations for a while, come out of hobo. All right, just a couple more examples. Like, board member receives a call from a parent claiming the teacher made inappropriate comments. Board member emails the superintendent with this information, so it's A-plus all the way. And then calls the principal and says, "You got to investigate this." So we're doing fine, but that is absolutely not true of the board member's role. So the next, we have an online post, and there, all this, all the board member has done is post a memorandum prepared by the superintendent, email the board members. We can debate whether or not this is information to be requested under Oprah would be available. Given the reference to medical condition, I think not. But let's assume it was much more innocuous and didn't involve that information. It's something that could be Oprah'd by a citizen. So quote-unquote, "What's wrong with my simply posting it on my Facebook page?" Why did we give you the answers? We should give you the answers, right? Is posting that on your Facebook page private action if it compromises the board? Certainly. Are you holding confidential all matters which might be listed into individuals if disclosed? Well, of course you are, right? Are you supporting personnel with powerful performance of duties? No, you're not. So the fact that the information is factual, the fact that it may or may not be at least in part something that a citizen could Oprah, has absolutely nothing to do with your responsibilities as a board member. One, one that we tossed in here because it touched the other way, right? The board member who's going to vote on the basketball equipment, who, it's not what the basketball equipment is. So that's, that's, but it's not, because it's more like, about you to be involved.
Where's the calling?
Yeah, just a standard issue.
Okay, so as we head into the next quarter of just four years, I'd like to recognize a few things. First, I'd like to welcome our high school students back from the Galapagos Islands. Eleven days plus waking home was certainly a lot, but I know it was an amazing experience for the students and our staff. And I hope everyone is taking an opportunity to look at the social media posts and all the videos with all the photos and descriptions of the trip. Second, I would like to congratulate the following middle school students for their accomplishments at the Hudson County Law Day. William Martinez, sixth grade essay contest winner. Magnus Paterca, sixth grade poetry contest winner. And Jai Malik, eighth grade poetry contest winner. Each of these three students will be honored at an award ceremony on April 4th of August. Third, I would publicly like to thank the Hoboken Public Education Foundation for their willingness to run our Kaplan SAT program. I would also like to announce that our graduation date slash our last day of school will remain June 18th. There's no change to that. While there have been some questions about lots of day of school due to a water main break, we do still meet them on the regular days of school as required by the state of New Jersey. On tonight's agenda, I would like to highlight, or I probably won't share, the 22nd, June 22nd, as the last day of school. On tonight's agenda, I'd like to highlight a few things. There's a number of grants on the agenda. Certainly pleased and happy to notice a number of opportunities that are being granted not only by our grants office, but by additional administrators in the district to generate funds and revenue to support a multitude of programs. There's also an item on the agenda for our audit. Hopefully Ms. Good will leave some comments about that when we get to that point. But I'm certainly proud to say that there's some faculty leading the audit. Also asking that the Board of Education this evening approve the district's dual language pilot program. We will be hosting a lottery on Friday, April 29th for all of our families interested in having their child participate in this pilot. While not on the agenda, I would like to direct everyone's attention to the progress of our budget. If you visit our website and you go to the business office and then scroll down to the 2023-2024 budget, there you will find a summary of work on our draft. On May 2nd, we will be hosting a public hearing prior to the adoption of the budget on May 9th. And I believe Ms. Good will make an additional, two additional comments out of that. Finally, I think we will hold interest lately in some spring events such as AP and state testing. Also, our spring high school athletics and county championships and state championships that take place and tournaments that take place at the end of the year. The Hoboken Public Education Foundation Gala that will be coming up. And also certainly the district's musical. So I'm going to be highlighting those dates for all of the events to the entire school community. So please be sure to check your email because weekly I do send out something called a herald. So if you're not receiving it, please let me know. If you are receiving it, please open it and take a look through it every week. I think there's a lot of important information. And just to recap, I want to make sure that everyone is clear that the graduation day and the last day of school will be the 22nd of September as I mentioned. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Do you have a business administrator report?
Yes. Please note that on the original agenda, which was not discussed in the finance committee, there is a motion to revise the preschool budget. The total amount of the budget has not changed. It's just that how money is being allocated has been revised. Also, the audit in which you are approving this evening, there are no recommendations and there are no findings in the audit. We have a clean audit, which I am happy to say, and I thank my whole team because it's took the team effort by this office. And I do thank the whole staff. On May 2nd, we will do a full budget presentation. As Dr. Johnson had indicated in her comments, we can make changes in our revisions at that May meeting. Please note that from the original budget that was presented last month, we will note the changes at that meeting because our tax levy has gone down from, I believe, 8.47% down to 6.25%. So we will make note on what the changes were in the 2024-25 budget. If there are any changes that will affect that tax levy either up or down, it will be so stated in that public meeting. That's my report.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we will move to the number four, our community administration report.
Good evening. So the Ad Act Community Outreach Committee conducted meetings with city council meetings members throughout the month of March. We appreciate the time that Council President Jolor, Council Vice President Russo, and Council persons Cohen, Doyle, Fisher, Chitino, Ramos, and Pintaro took to learn more about the accomplishments of district students and challenges of the district this same day. The following items were discussed. Kindergarten enrollment for the 2023-2024 school year, continued enrollment of at Hoboken High School. We shared a facilities update, information on the class of 2023's college acceptances and scholarships. We invited all of city council members to the May 2nd budget presentation. And we did discuss what considerations and any has been given to the growth in students or need for additional educational space in the city master planning process. We look forward to continuing these discussions and keeping the public up to date.
Thank you. And the curriculum committee met on Wednesday, April 5th, 2023.
In attendance were Ms. Capitoy, Mr. Delatorre, Ms. DeGrana, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, Assistant Superintendent Sandra Rodriguez Gomez, and myself. There are three agenda items on tonight's agenda and we recommend all for board approval. 9.01 is the updated dual language plan, 9.02 is assemblies, and 9.03 is field trips. And I'm going to speak to items 01 and 0... Sorry, 01 and 03. The goals of the dual language plan are bilingualism and bilinguistic, high academic achievement, and sociocultural competency. So this dual language program will offer English and Spanish-speaking students an exciting, enriching, and challenging educational opportunity, which will be piloted in a total of five kindergarten classrooms across the district. Two at Wallace and one at Connors. It's an instructional model that provides content-based instruction to students in two languages. The goal is for students over a number of years of participation to become proficient and literate in both languages while also meeting high academic standards. Dual immersion students will learn to read, write, and communicate effectively in both Spanish and English while achieving high levels of academic success. These students will also gain bilingual skills and cross-cultural competencies necessary to succeed in a multicultural society and global economy. In terms of the student selection process, as Dr. Johnson mentioned, lottery kindergarten will be on April 28th. There will be related preference for students with limited English proficiency, and there will be no sibling preference. And that's all for the dual language update. In terms of item 9.03 for field trips, there will be a start-up Black College and University tour going to Washington DC, a trip to Hudson County Arts Exhibition. Some of our elementary school students will be going to Brunswick for many law adventures. And there will also be a trip of high school students to the National Museum of African American History and Culture and the Smithsonian Museum of the American Latino. The committee also will discuss the following items not on the agenda. Kaplan SAT review courses that are going to be offered at the high school courtesy of the Hoboken Public Education Foundation. An upcoming AP testing, those dates are May 1st through May 11th. The high school this year will be fielding a team for the U.S. Bio Olympia. It's our first year having a team participate. We also discussed Arcadio Torres, who's the national award winner of the Float Fabulary Black History Month Hip-Hop Contest. So it's super exciting. He's working with a team of artists who create lessons inspired by his writing on Frederick Douglass. And his video will go live in September of 2023. It will be shared over 35,000 schools throughout the world. So bravo, Arcadio, this is very exciting. We can't wait to see the video when it's done. And then finally, the second annual family health night. The grades 5 through 7 will take place on Tuesday, May 11th, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Winton High School. It's a powerful opportunity for families and students to hear presentations and engage in goal-setting regarding puberty, health of lifestyles, and making good choices. And that's my report. Thank you.
Good evening. The facilities committee met on Wednesday, April 5th, at 2:00 p.m. In attendance were Mr. Callagie, Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Ms. Norwood, Mr. Kleptow, and myself. There are two agenda items for facilities this month, and we recommend both for board approval. 13.01 is the fire and safety drill for March, and 13.02 is the facilities requests. We have two requests from High Athletics and All-Star Volleyball Club. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Mr. Kleptow.
The finance committee convened on April 6th, when we were at Mr. Delatorre, Ms. Norwood, Ms. Good, Ms. Lopez, and Dr. Johnson. The committee reviewed all but two items that are on tonight's agenda. These two items were late additions subsequent to the meeting. One of which, Ms. Good, is merging the revised preschool budget. The other is item 11.10, acceptance of a donation from a team of students of $62 to the district for better fundraising. Speaking of the Ad Act Committee, that we do recommend that as well. That could please be called here to the law as heard. I'm sorry, when I came back, Ms. Good just sort of quickly went over this, but I think it deserves another mention, the fact that our audit, I think this is its third consecutive year where it has no findings or recommendations. I've certainly not been finding it, not consecutively, but maybe years as other people on the board. I think if you haven't appreciated, just a little bit of appreciation for the sheer number of purchase orders, checks written, budget checks, things like that, to find that that is all buttoned up, I think speaks well. Not only does it good in the entire business office, but it's like so thoughtful and trustworthy. I thank the entire business office and the administration for that successful audit.
The governments and personnel will meet on May 8th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Capitoy, Ms. DeGrana, and myself. Committee discussed all agenda items and we recommend all for approval. As is typical throughout the school year, you can see the non agenda items for leave requests, appointments, transfers, and reservations of teachers or other persons on. Tonight's agenda, this will include professionals, staff, teachers, substitutes, district family convention staffing, catwalk to learning staffing, and district senior positions. A few items of particular note, pretend that through pre-acceptance of reservations for the school year audits, may I special acknowledge and give thanks to Lynn Gallow and Joseph Attali. Together, they have over seven years of service to the district. There'll be two years, so there's Miss Gallow, and 39 years, who's with Attali. And they are retiring this year. So we are so appreciative and thankful for their service to the district. Through their long tenure, they have impacted the school experience of many thousands of students and staff alike. We wish both of them much happiness in their retirement. And 10 dot 02, 12, approval of volunteers for the theater department of the district of Hoboken. One again, special thanks to all the parents and guardians who generously give their time as volunteers to support the district theater program. Each of you are essential members of the team that allow our theater department to thrive. We produce amazing shows like a food production of SpongeBob Musical, of the SpongeBob Musical with over 110 students participating. Also, 10 dot 16 and 10 dot 17, approval of appointments for 10 year certificate staff members and certificate administrators. Each year, the board approves the appointment of our 10 year certificate staff members and administrators. And then lastly, as typical, there are agenda items for a variety of workshops for district staff, including the following workshops, the enhanced skills and networks of participants. Annual School Chancer Conference, Veteran Preschool Instructional Coaching Conference, Regional Preschool Administrator Meeting, Center of Social and Emotional Wellness Meeting, and Hudson County Kids' Art Training Session. So thankful to the teachers and administrators who are going to take their time to participate in those sessions. And that's my report.
And lastly, the wellness minister Delatorre.
Good evening, everyone. The wellness committee met yesterday, April 17th, at 6:45 p.m. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Mr. Carrier, and myself. All agenda items were discussed and recommend all for approval. The total grant submissions on this agenda totaled $2.2 million. Cover a range of areas from mental health to bike safety. We look forward to hearing back on our submissions over the following weeks slash months. Also, I'd like to extend a sincere thank you to Ms. Ilya Cruz, Ms. Gayde de la Rosa, Ms. Patty Drumble, Ms. Pico Pietra, along with a few other Hoboken High School teachers and chaperones. They accompanied an aspirated group of Hoboken regulars on an incredible learning adventure to Ecuador and the Galapagos Islands during the school break. Tires tirelessly coordinating eight flights, numerous boat trips, and countless bus rides. Thanks to these individuals, our reverends were able to embrace a new culture, peak curiosity, and build on new and existing friendships. With your patience, enthusiasm, and care, you guided them on an unforgettable adventure and no doubt held making memories that'll last a lifetime. Thank you.
I'd also like to welcome our students back to the Galapagos and our teachers and administration. It sounded like an amazing experience. And I'd also like to give Ms. Good a round of applause because it is simply amazing that our audit is clean. And that's a pretty good sell. At last month's meeting, we noted that the budget hearing will be on May 2nd, and the board will vote on the budget at the regular May board meeting, which will be held on May 9th. The district has received numerous open requests with regard to the budget. And I asked Mr. Gallagie if he could please address that.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. There have been some recent requests under Oprah for copies of documents prepared by the board as part of preparing the 2023-2024 budget. Some folks assert that these documents should be publicly available since they're shared with the Office of the Executive County Superintendent. However, these are still considered drafts, not just by us or by the Department of Education, since they can't be and often are revised up to the point that they receive approval from the county office. On receiving them, the documents are no longer considered drafts and are then covered by Oprah and obviously the subject of the board meeting that the president just mentioned. So we hope that that clarification is helpful.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to public comments on agenda items. Ms. Waiters? As Ms. Waiters meets the way to the podium, I just want to give a brief reminder before we open public comments. Over the years and most recently, the board has been asked why it does not pivot or stop comments about school district employees from individuals who speak during the public comment portion of the meeting. The short answer is that the law prevents the board from censoring comments made about this district personnel. The board does not condone nor does the board pardon comments as such. However, just because the speaker may have the right to say what he or she feels, it does not absolve the speaker from liability for any defamatory comments that an employee may bring against the speaker. Should speakers say something that subjects them to a civil suit, the responsibility falls squarely on the speaker and not on the board. I also want to remind speakers of board policy, case study, name, municipality, residence, and disaffiliation. If any speakers are allowed five minutes, then it will form a scamatory or defy the motion with 30 seconds left. Good evening, Ms. Waiters.
Hi, for quality assurance purposes, my name is Patricia Waiters. And I'm putting you on, I'm like, I'm trying to get a party on the phone because I want this recorded because this is a shock to me right now. So I don't want to be acting emotions, but on the agenda on page... Let's just go with the action number. 10 dash 7, 10 dash 7, approval of hiring trade funds for the year 2022 slash 2023. School year facilities, and go on and talk about action, 10 government personnel. I am an employee for the record, and so is this individual. I don't know if this board members, all you board trustees are familiar with what's been taking place. I just gave it to the administrator just yesterday. So forgive me if you don't know, you're not aware of it. I'm basing it on the record tonight because I want to be taken very seriously. Two months ago, I stood here and told you that I had issues involved in the board ads. Everybody tried to make it political. It's not political. See, that's what I did when I ran this town, but I also know the law. I went to Dr. Johnson, I got 16 piece reports. I made several attempts to try to rectify this. Some of you come and pick up their kids from school every day and sit and talk with me in that front and see how hard it is for me to remain professional at running sport and education as such. I want tonight for y'all to protect the integrity of this district because this is going to go far out. I don't know, counsel, that you shouldn't wait for the whole session because when I put this on the record, this is serious, okay? I don't want you to look the opposite way, and you know me, you go way back. I don't want you to look the opposite way. I want this to be taken serious because if this is allowed to pass, this will impact our whole district. I mentioned from the superintendent, one down, and anybody has involved with this, with this biased racist attack that's happening in our district, I want them to be held accountable. And Dr. Johnson, for the record, know it is not unitary. And for you that have the nerve to take this guy and reward him $73,900. He was rewarded for the harm that he brought against me. I've been to the prosecutor's office, he is the head, and I brought you evidence. I brought you facts that he has.
Please direct your comments to me.
Okay, this is the board and this entire, this thousand chair. This is serious. I'm directing it to you as an entire body. This is serious. So I don't know if you should stop me now. I don't know if you should stop me now, counsel, okay? Because you're a very smart man. Stop me now before I go further. But I'm telling each and every one, if you vote on 10.7, I'm telling the man to continue. If you cannot reward it with almost $74,000 since I was attacked, I was told divorced by 10 caliber, 10 caliber. And I know I said very good friendly words, but for me, it has facts and evidence and presented to you, and you look the opposite way. And tonight, you don't see my face, are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? If this is you can't be allowed to get away with something like this, why should we trust you without kids' education? Why? Tell me that. Tell me that. Do you think this is going to disappear? It's bigger than me. You can pack the whole campus. All of us was involved in this, and he getting rewarded and walking away with $73,900. You do the math. Please, counsel, okay? She not the letter from the prosecutor's office, Ms. Good, I'm sorry, cannot she. Mrs. Good, I think you better review that before y'all go on this, okay? Please, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waiters.
So which to speak?
Next, we'll move on to tonight's agenda. It's their election. Second. Ms. Capitoy?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. DeGrana?
Yes.
Mrs. Connaught?
Yes.
Mr. Kleptow?
Yes.
Ms. Kirk?
Abstain on 10.09, yes on the rest.
Ms. Norwood?
Abstain on 9.01, yes on the rest.
Mr. Carrier?
Abstain on 9.01 and yes on the rest.
Ms. Engle, yes. Motion passes. Okay. I think that's about it.
Well, generally enough, but because I think the less you give to the attorney, the easier it is. Though if you are giving the comments that we made, I just made an inquiry in terms of a letter from the prosecutor's office to the district. Apparently, there is no letter from the prosecutor's office to the district. So there's nothing which I can advise the board. I know that the issues that were referenced, I don't know the workflow, but the issues involve dispute within a bar level and dispute over leadership. And I don't want the board or some groups in the public to think that there's a toxic attitude taken by the board. There are members of the bar level meetings here. I think even they would agree, although they may not speak, that should the board get involved in leadership disputes or the administration get involved in leadership disputes within the bar level meeting. There are very few better examples of unfair letter practice. So sometimes it's difficult, sometimes it's unpleasant, certainly adds to the difficulty of the district. But what the board and the administration can do is very good, given the fact that it cannot interfere with what is otherwise in the business. But in regard to the comments made, I wanted to make it clear that there is no such letter for which I can advise the board as a base to this particular act. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, now we'll move on to public comments on both agenda and on agenda items. It's Ms. Waiters. Ms. Waiters, are you going to speak again?
I just want to be agreeable when I say... I just want to be agreeable when I say, guys, I'm on the phone with every councilman, everybody that live in this city, any electrician I can think of, because this is bribery in this first line. This is horrible, guys. This is horrible. I'm all, y'all. Can you think of something like this for this to go from twenty-something thousand dollars to $73,900? I guess that would suit me more than shut up because he was told to come and ask me. Y'all got kids in the district. You got your son, Lord, you got people in the district. It's bigger than money. It is bigger than money. It's bigger than money. I'm listening, though. That little public is very interested in hearing this. This is the public force, son. This is the public force, you man and chair and this entire body. I'm being professional. I'm being legal. If you feel like you got a lawsuit going, I'm still addressing you and this entire body. This is serious. Time for the open to stop. We see racial disparities all around the world. We watch it every day. And it ain't gonna disappear. If you don't fix something to try to run on a black tie, it not going nowhere. We gotta address the racist disparities. Had enough of little black Miss Pat Waiters, we wouldn't be here. It's racial. And I talked to that Dr. Johnson, and he still get that way to block his little room. And then tonight, he gets $73,900, $73,900. That's grabbing a lot of feathers. They scare somebody still at home. Let's do this with integrity. I'm telling you again, please, 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 make it serious. Me, put your operation down to the attorney here. Do not leave these premises tonight voting yes on this without an investigation being conducted, and that is my right. Mr. Attorney, you're an attorney, you know the law too. I want an investigation, an independent investigation. I'm serious, because I would be entrapped with this one. Do not do that. Do not tell it to me. I was ignored, taking a known disrespect. What is going to be? We could have been standing justice for Ralph with my son, right? You see that little boy y'all today, right? When you walk him out, a hatred in your heart and your actual struggle, this is what happened. I sent Dr. Johnson a place with a hate card, bias, and I told you everything. Three months straight, and then still tonight, it still took place. How? Close session, Mr. Bobby, all with respect to you. Please, Mr. Bobby, all, the close session. Close session will be not numbered, discussed on a public input. Even though the statement you said in the beginning, this is a public question. Y'all mad at any concern, public people say whatever they want. If you think that it's a lot of money or any kind of lawsuit I'm ready, I already started, honest. My stuff is downstairs, the prosecutor's office number on there, everything you need. Everything I can do to help you, you need. I had something I found. I would, I gave y'all everything directed to me, and I was taking a known disregard. That's the point, everybody. Remind you, I'm still an employee. I gotta worry about being retaliated like my daughter. I gotta worry about not having a job to feed my kids. I gotta worry about retaliation, so tonight you show me an actual retaliation and reward again, reward again for eight months, eight thousand dollars. Are you kidding me? Eighteen, nineteen thousand dollars.
We have no more individuals on the agenda.
All right, Dr. Johnson, would you like to say?
Yes, so it's important for the Board of Education to know that when an employee comes to the superintendent with a dispute among another employee and within a bargaining unit, it is the responsibility of the superintendent to bring that information directly to the board of council upon conversation and upon communication and review of the information.
And you missed the doctor, Dr. Johnson.
It is my responsibility, which I can do, to take guidance from our board council. Our board council very clearly looked and went over confirmation with me and provided guidance that disputes within a bargaining unit or a union must be handled through the JEA and not the district because it will, in fact, puts the board and the administration in a position to make a determination that is not within the boundaries or the scope of the responsibility or even within the scope of authority of the Board of Education or the superintendent of schools. So as a result, all of the information as well as communication from board council went to the JEA regarding the situation. We then needed and heard back from the JEA regarding the situation that they, in fact, would manage the dispute among employees within a particular bargaining unit. So with that being said, it is not the responsibility of the Board of Education or the administration to settle disputes between and among union members or between and among bargaining unit members.
I've been hurt. I've been attacked. I've been hurt. And this matter, it has nothing to do with the union, Dr. Johnson. Your board of executives, it has nothing to do with the union. You know that. Madam Chair, with all respect to you, I'm answering. I'm answering. It has nothing to do with the union, and you know that. Do you ask for your opinion when you try to cut this?
Please.
Please, sir. You're in the room with your children, not mine. What about my family and my children?
You've got time to speak.
For real, Dr. Johnson, it's serious now, right?
Public comment is closed.
No, no, I answered her, ma'am. She answered me, and she gave false information. That's not true. The union aren't helping. You're not the two creating. You're the two creating this.
Ms. Waiters, this is not a communication back and forth. You may.
No, no, I got this right. I answered her, ma'am, she answered. She gave false information. Thank you.
No, you don't.
Well, I did. So sue me. For real.
You should proceed with board business, Madam President.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we'd like to welcome our families, who we all want to celebrate this week, and we are so glad that you're all here. Thank you for being here. Thank you for these wonderful children that you brought with you, and we look forward to hearing about each one of them this evening. So in moving into our recognition, fortunately, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez.
I hope everyone enjoyed their spring break and had a chance to regroup and recharge. On behalf of the district's leadership team, we are happy to get back to our innovative and engaging work. I am honored to give greetings to all in attendance and welcome, and a hearty welcome to the members of our Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, administrators, faculty, community members, students, and their special guests, their families. It is a joy to stand before you and introduce our talented principals as they come to the podium to share detailed information and interesting anecdotes about the students being honored here this evening. Tonight, we acknowledge and celebrate the hard work of our students as they are celebrated for Students of the Month for the month of March. Tonight, you will hear about unrelenting effort and powerful results. The students who will be celebrated this evening were driven to succeed, and their efforts have certainly paid off. We are so proud of each of you and can't wait to hear about your current academic journey and your plans for your future. We will, as we always do, begin with the Joseph F. Brand School and its proud principal, Mr. Bartlett. He will then introduce the Connors Vice Principal, Mr. Hamlin, and he will then follow this same pattern introducing our next presenters, Principal Shannon, Principal Sorefey, and Principal Pica Petra of Wallace Hoboken Middle and Hoboken High School respectively. Each will celebrate their school's selections and then, of course, pause for a picture opportunity. Again, thank you for being with us tonight, and with that, I would ask Principal Bartlett to join me on the podium.
Thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez, as always, and good evening, everyone. At this time, I would like to ask Eli Leventon to come to me at the podium. Congratulations to Eli Leventon, our Joseph F. Brand Elementary School Student of the Month for March 2023. Eli was nominated by the second grade teachers, Ms. Klipka and Ms. Raven. Ms. Klipka and Ms. Raven reflected together on Eli's accomplishments so far this school year. They said, "Eli has shown tremendous growth this past month in his effort and his schoolwork. He's been working hard to not only complete all of his schoolwork in a timely manner, but also assist a first grader class and their teacher from time to time. He's gone above and beyond in helping this classroom by working with peers who have ELA and math challenges. When Eli visits those first graders, he goes to that classroom and takes it very seriously, immediately asking what he can do to assist the first grade teacher. Eli is a great role model for his peers and his second grade class as well. As principal, I'm so proud of Eli's leadership and growth throughout the school year. When I have conversations with him in the hallway, he is polite and respectful and is always happy to share with me how his day is going. When I see Eli skipping in the third floor hallway, I know I am about to have a wonderful conversation with a wonderful young man. This year, Eli is very proud that he finished in fourth place in the Brand School spelling meet. Eli is a very smart, bright individual who has a lot of strong qualities when it comes to being a successful learner. Eli is above grade level in his academics, so his willingness to want to challenge himself allows him to be a positive role model for his peers. Eli loves to draw. He is very creative and artistic. Drawing is a great form of expression for him, and he thoroughly enjoys it. He also enjoys reading. He loves to read chapter books. One thing that Eli knows he wants to do is publish a story that he writes and illustrates himself. Eli shared that he would like to invent something when he gets older. He also wants to create movies and has expressed that he would love to produce and direct a movie one day. Reflecting on being honored here tonight as our student of the month, Eli said, "When I received this award, my parents were very proud of me. Getting this award was a surprise. It felt good to get it for being myself. Sometimes school can be hard, but you should never give up. Sometimes it is hard to get my work done, but now that all changed and it feels nice. I was always encouraged by everyone around me and tried to never give up. This award is going to continue making me work hard. I love going to Brand because there you get to be free. I get to be myself, and so does everyone else. The staff is nice and kind. Mr. Bartlett does not want anyone to feel sad, and he always lends a helping hand. Brand is like a second home." Well, Eli, thank you for those kind and caring words about our school. The fact that you took the time to share those thoughts on your night tonight while you are being recognized is a testament to your stellar character and leadership capabilities. We could not be more proud of you. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in a round of applause for Eli Leventon. At this time, I'd like to welcome to the podium the Vice Principal of the Connor School, Mr. Jack Hamlin.
At this time, I'd like to call up Grace Shoemaker, the Tallas Cheek Counters Elementary School, March 2023 student of the month. Grace Shoemaker is a fifth grader of Ms. Ortiz's homeroom class. Ms. Ortiz shared that Grace is an absolute pleasure to have in class. She is excelling academically and is a diligent student. Grace is a natural learner and absorbs new information like exposure. Her exemplary work is a reflection of her admirable attitude and noble effort. She's dedicated to recitals and ensures that she is always putting her best foot forward. She's an attentive listener and shows outstanding participation in class. She sets ambitious goals and is always eager to commence with her work. If she does not understand something, she uses her growth mindset and her natural grit to push forward and improve. She's not shy about requesting assistance with reading. She shows a passion and respect to her peers, teachers, and school administration. Although she prefers independence from working, she's an excellent peer resource for her classmates and always as a positive actor. Her cheerful mindset is infectious, and she brightens up counters with her constant smile. Outside of school, Grace loves to play soccer and is on the 2012 Red Bulls team. Grace is missing her soccer practice tonight so she can be here to accept this award list. Grace is religiously participating in two district musicals as a member of the ensemble cast of Schoolhouse Rock and Matilda, and she's currently in the cast of SpongeBob. Her dedication to performing and rehearsing is impressive. Her favorite subject in school is math, and she loves every aspect of math, except for fractions. Grace is also a thoughtful and caring friend. She's an excellent listener. She always tries to include everyone in everything that's being done. One of her close friends made share she's a good person because she's loyal and has a great sense of humor. Another friend, Nala, stated, "She's a good classmate because she's kind and always willing to help others." When I asked Grace if she felt about going to the middle school next year, she was excited. When I asked her why, she didn't hesitate to mention all the additional friends that she'd be reunited with when she gets here. When Grace found out that she was student of the month, she felt proud. Her mom and dad share, "We're proud of Grace for achieving student of the month." Grace loves her teacher, Ms. Ortiz, and all of the other teachers and staff at Connors. We've loved watching her grow academically while playing and traveling soccer, performing in the district musical, being a Girl Scout, and this year added Urban Funnel. We can't wait to see what she does in those schools. She's also an excellent, loving big sister and a very good friend. We're so proud of you. And Grace, me and Connors are also very proud of you. You're an incredible Connors Koala. You exhibit every aspect of the Connors' character qualities. We're going to miss you so much when you move on to the Hoboken Middle School. We're confident that you'll be an incredible asset there, just as you are at Connors. So please join me in giving a round of applause to Grace Shoemaker, our call for student of the month. And I would like to introduce, bring up to the podium, Mr. Barton Shad, the Principal of Wallace on the Muncher School.
Good evening. Wallace School is proud to recognize Alex Wayne, a fourth grade student in Mrs. Taglari's class as a student of the month for March 2023. Mrs. Taglari nominated Alex for this honor because his outstanding work and effort during language arts, math, and social studies lessons, his contributions as a member of the fourth grade class, his work in CTY program, and his overall wonderful disposition. Additionally, he is kind and helpful. As principal, I appreciate how well-rounded a person Alex is. He holds himself to high academic standards every day. However, it is his character that helps him stand out. He has a passion for learning that is infectious, and I appreciate all that Alex brings to the school community. I am very proud of Alex. Keep up the good work. Mrs. Taglari went on to say, "Alex is a lovely young man that will no doubt be famous someday. I look forward to seeing his name on inventions or commercials or even the Yankees, his favorite baseball team. Alex has earned a spot on the honorable every marking period since first grade. He is an active member of the CTY program at Wallace. His favorite pastimes are playing baseball." baseball with his brother and reading books. Alex is actively a part of the Wallace School Band, playing violin is no easy task, but he truly enjoys it. He is also a part of the Wallace School Student Council, which he hopes to be a part of again next year when he becomes a fifth grader. Although he loves to delve into a book, novel, or literary piece, his favorite subject is math. Alex is outstanding at solving mathematical equations. He aspires to become either an engineer or something to do in sports and his goal is to attend Princeton University. Alex says he loves the Yankees and hopes to one day attend a championship game like the World Series. Alex, it's a delight to have in class, says Mrs. Taglari. I'm so proud of all he has accomplished so far. He is such an asset to the classroom, the student body, and the Hoboken community. He has a wonderful sense of humor and is easy to get along. Although Alex didn't have a famous quote, one that matches his kindness and personality is, "If you see someone without a smile, give them one of yours." Congratulations to Alex Wayne, the Wallace School Student of the Month for March 2023.
I would like to call Principal Sworfe into the podium and Hoboken Middle School.
Evening, everyone. I could not be more proud of this next student. Please join me at the podium, Angelina Rivera. It is my pleasure to introduce Angelina Rivera, a member of the Hoboken Middle School Tiger family and March overall student of the month. Angelina is an eighth grade, eighth grade student who has demonstrated significant academic and social growth during her time at Hoboken Middle School. She is kind, empathetic, and helpful to everyone around her. Angelina strives to be her very best and lights up the classroom along the way. She truly embodies tiger pride. Last month, she showed her musical talent by participating in the Hoboken Middle School Tigers Got Talent showcase. Angelina sang beautifully and also played the piano. Angelina tries her best every day and works hard and is passionate about everything she does. Angelina was nominated by her teacher, Ms. Burke, who notes that Angie is one of, is a one of a kind student who is always willing to help, lend a helping hand to her peers. Angie is driven and determined to succeed. She always wants to better herself, learn something new, and improve. Angelina has taken her goal of making friends and pushing herself out of her comfort zone very seriously and has surpassed all expectations. She joined the best buddies club where she shows off her creativity as well as being a member of the Friends of Rachel Club. Angelina has grown tremendously this school year as a student, a friend, and a leader. We will, we will be sad to see her leave Hoboken Middle School, but with her passion for life, love for her friends, and her unique views on the world, we know that Hoboken High School is getting started. Angelina loves animals and is passionate about conservation efforts, especially for insects, lizards, and Florida gators. She loves art and is passionate about creating imaginary worlds and realistic animal creations in various forms of media. Angelina would love to live off the land in a quiet log cabin when she grows up. She is also passionate about starting an Etsy store where she sells her unique stuff. Is that one?
No, it's just like.
All right. Angelina loves farming and shares that she's interested in growing plants and harvesting crops. Angelina would like to pursue a career in stop motion animation. She shares, she shares that she likes to create animals out of clay that have a color and a theme that matches their emotional energy. When I asked Angelina her thoughts about being named student of the month, she had this to say, and I quote, "It means to me, life is more about, more than just working hard, but about creating yourself and fixing your mistakes. Sometimes you have to not worry about being successful and just work towards finding a way to be successful. I want to share with others that even though you might worry about not succeeding, succeeding, you are not alone. This award means that I am successful and I want to show others that they can be successful too. This award is nothing I ever expected, but I am so proud of myself. Be careful with your actions and yourself, work hard, be happy, and be kind, and always be respectful to everyone. Everyone is different in this world, life is life, and all of it is important. I am proud of myself, I would like to thank Ms. Gutierrez, Ms. Burke, my family, and my community. I think we can all see that Angelina more than deserves this award because she has worked hard to become the person she is today. Over the last seven months, she has grown into a completely different person and our world needs more Angelina Rivera's in it." Please, please join in applause for our Hoboken Student of the Month of the Month.
And it's also, it's for Miss Tink too, so please support Miss Tink.
Is she named student of the month? Oh my goodness, I am so excited. At this time, I'd like to invite Hannah Morley, Hoboken High School Student of the Month for March. It's not easy to ask as a ninth grade or a freshman to make student of the month, so this girl has it all. So it didn't come as a surprise to anyone for winning this. She's already made a name for herself as a freshman. At the end of the first semester, she's already posted a 4.5 GPA and she's challenging herself by taking all pre-AP classes and AP world history. Well done. Hannah is a musician and Ms. Stasiak shared she's a superstar musician, excelling in both band and chorus. As a student, she's reserved but confident, leading band members through rehearsals and outstanding insight reading challenges. She earned a sax solo in the band's rendition of The Incredible Steam as well as a vocal solo in the choir's spring concert song, Louder Than Words. As a freshman, an unprecedented feat, her future in the music industry if she chooses is very bright. Her academic teachers have the same regard. She is intelligent, insightful, dedicated, and reflective student. She is persistent in her quest for academic excellence and a pleasure to have in class as well as the debate program. Hannah is an absolute pleasure to have. She is kind, inquisitive, and extremely hardworking. She has gotten over 100% as her final grade for every marking period thus far, which is a testament to her motivation and intelligence. Most importantly, Hannah has great relationships with her peers and teachers and she is an absolute pleasure to work with. She has truly earned everything she has achieved this year. And Mr. LeBeng shared she is extremely bright and hardworking, model student, a pleasure to have in the pre-AP bio class. She participates actively in class and contributes greatly to academic discussions. Strong work ethic, always doing her very best on each and every assignment. She studies hard and gets very good grades on tests. In addition, she works well with others in her group and is always willing to help others. I wanted to hear a little bit from Hannah, so here is what she shared with us. Her best experience at Hoboken High School in her eight months is the Mala UN trip that she took to Philadelphia with the debate team. Her desire to continually improve is what motivates her. She is on the trajectory for a four-year college with Princeton and Oxford University at the top of her list, but she is considering a gap year. She is not too serious right now, she's still figuring out what she would like to do. She enjoys playing piano and guitar and reading in her downtime. Many of her friends she knew before coming to Hoboken High School, but has been creating new relationships with people who she has in classes and in her co-curricular activities. No doubt, her friends would describe her as dedicated, determined, and a fast learner, and her favorite co-curricular activities are debate, chorus, and swing. I and we all look forward to seeing your growth over the next three years, Hannah. Keep up the great work and congratulations.
Well, the recognition portion of our meeting is our favorite part of the meeting and you can see why it's tonight. We'd like to congratulate all of our students who are here with us, thank their families for bringing them and sharing each of their stories with us, and wish you the best of luck as you enter the fourth marking period. It's almost summer, keep working hard and you'll do great. So thank you, thank you for being here today. And with that, that concludes our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.